Well, it's four o'clock. We take a little bit of a turn to the commission here. Let the record reflect that every member is here. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, number 12 will be number 10 under new business. And we just follow so we have to that.
Number 12 will be number 10?
And we just push number 10 and number 11 down.
What did you want? Are you eliminating something?
No, no. No, it's 12 to go before us.
Oh, you want 12 to go before 10?
Right. Move everything now.
He comes from New York. That's New York coming.
All right, you want it. All right, we'll make that 9A. All right, anything else?
Nope, that'll be all.
Mood to approve is amended second.
Mood and second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Uh, let's see, consent agenda, items five through nine.
Mood to approve, second.
Mood and second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries the agenda. Consent agenda is adopted. Open forum. You see one. Kim.
I would like to know who was on the Metro Bus project team for Connects. If you look at the back page of the recommendation about Connects, this is not what I wanted to speak about, but I absolutely have to bring this up. It's really bad transit planning to say that there's a chunk of no service time. When you're asking a group of people to depend on a service and you're saying like from Saturday 10:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., but one hour no service, and then Sunday 10 to 4, but no service from 10, 11 to 12, to noon. People are trying to plan their trips, and this would be like a mess for people. That's not okay. It's much better to, it would be kind of like, if you have an office that's small and you say, "We're going to shut down the whole office for an hour." That's a little different because it's not transportation. But when you're having transportation planning and people trying to go from one place to another, cutting out a chunk of time in the middle, that's really hard on people. So that was not something I was going to talk about. But I'd really like to know who is on these teams and how many members of the public, family members, providers? How many of those people are on these groups that are making recommendations? Because you got to get a balanced viewpoint. The main thing I want to talk about is the increased time that is taking for medical returns. I'm getting more and more reports that some people are waiting three hours to get a medical return. A lot of times, people might be on dialysis. They might be diabetic, coming from the hospital, just being discharged from the hospital. They might have another type of fragile medical condition. It's trending to be longer, and it's been happening anywhere from two to four months where it's the medical returns, the return time is trending. It's getting worse. And I would like to see if I could, is there, what does the bus board and the bus commission feel is a reasonable amount of time for a medical return? And do you have numbers demonstrating what percentage is falling within that time? And then also maybe thinking of if it was one of your family members, a kid, or a parent, or a brother or sister, if you heard that they were waiting three hours to receive a medical return? And these are not surprise rides. When you book a ride, you say it's agreed upon what time you will be picked up. That's a definite time. And then the bus commission knows, okay, this range of time is when this person is going to be picked up. So I'd like to see numbers. I'd like to see what is the acceptable time? And I'd like to know what that is. And then what percentage of time is that happening? And then also, if there's, if you guys decide, what is the unreasonable amount of time? How much, how much percent or frequency is that happening? And I'd like to see real numbers come back and be told to me and be told to you guys. Because I really, we're getting into the really harder part of winter, and it's, I don't know if you know this, but sometimes with a worker shortage of PCAs or family members, maybe they could be home to help their family member or their client, let's say for a couple hours. If they get home really late, there might not even be anybody there to help them. And so the domino effect can happen. So that's my request.
We'll get that information and get back to the board. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will then go on to the general business. What used to be number 12 is now, we'll start with that. Financial update.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Chris Hall is here from Bergen KDV to...
You just want to leave early, that's why you want to...
What is the happy hour?
To enlighten all of us on the audited financial statements.
All right. So as mentioned, I'm here to go over the audited financial statements. So just a reminder, these are preliminary statements. There's one adjustment that we're waiting for the PBR8 reports to come through. So once that comes through, we'll issue finalized audit reports, so similar to last couple of years. All right. A couple of the reports of the financial statements. The main one is the independent auditor's report. So ultimately, it's management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. And as auditors, our responsibility is to express an opinion on them. We did issue a modified opinion, which is the highest opinion we can give. So we feel that as currently presented, it's free from the material misstatements. And then we know that there's that one adjustment that's going to happen. There's a couple other reports in the financial statements. One's a report in accordance with government auditing standards. So there was no compliance issues that we found. There was one internal control finding that we did have, and that's just the lack of sanitation in the community. So again, no significant changes from prior years. The other report that's in the back of the financial statements is a report on Minnesota legal compliance. So we test various state statutes as we do our audit, and there were no findings or compliance issues that we noted during our audit. The other booklet is communications letters. So there's a couple different sections of that. Required communications, okay, issues during our audit, we presented there. There weren't any, so there's probably nothing to discuss there. Financial analysis, which is going to be covered on the next couple of slides. And then emerging issues, so it's just a GASP standard that's upcoming. We spoke to Paula about it, but I don't really think it'll affect MTC. All right. So financial analysis. Inventory and balance, as of September 30, for the past five years has been, or is shown on this slide. It has been increasing over the last four years. So it's just something to be aware of, monitor, make sure it doesn't get too high. Operating revenues by source has also been increasing over the last, or over the five years presented. The largest increase is in the state. State grants and aids, which is an increase of $2.1 million from the prior year, or about 22.8%. This increase is due to a decrease in the local share contribution, so the MTC's contribution for operating grants for fixed route and dialer ride. And that was a one-year, one-time reduction. So next year, those, so next year, those will return to normal levels. Property taxes did increase 671,000. Most of that was in the operating levy, 681,000. And fixed assets, amounts of levy for fixed assets decreased 10,000. Other revenues decreased 70,000 due to reduction in alternative fuel refunds from the previous year. And then passenger fares are down 98,000, or about 6.3%. Total revenues and expenses. So total revenues in this case includes both operating, which was on the previous slide, and capital grants and contributions. So that has been increasing over the last several years, over the five years presented, it increased every year, and had larger increases in 2018 and 2019. Total expenses also increased steadily over those five years. Revenues were up 795,000 from 2018. Operating revenues were an increase of 2.4, as mentioned on the previous slide. And then capital grants and contributions actually decreased 1.6 million from the previous year. And that's just due to the timing of bus purchases. So more buses were purchased in the prior year that were reimbursed in capital grants. Expenses increased 936,000 from the prior year, and most of that was an increase in salaries and then depreciation expense. So this slide shows financial position over a five-year period. You can see the last three years, your financial position has increased just due to the performance in those funds. Net position increased from the prior year, 5,762,000. Net investment in capital assets increased 2585,000. Understrated cash balance increased 3385,000. And then unassigned net position increased 2568,000 from the previous year. This slide shows what is being assigned. So it's one of the components of that position. So the largest components of the assigned fund balance are in fixed assets, which is 1.6 million in 2019. Assigned for fixed route expansion was just over a million. And then early bond payoff was 630,000. All right. So this slide represents the capital expenditures over the last five years. In 2015 and 2016, MTC scaled back on its projects due to large expenditures in 2014. And then in 2017, it started purchasing buses again. So in 2017, it purchased six buses and then had a, and the garage addition in the dialer ride. And then in 2018, MTC purchased 14 buses. And then in 2019, it purchased another 10 buses. Operating revenues by source for 2018 and 2019 were pretty consistent. One thing to point out is state grants were up approximately 3% and then federal grants were down about 2%. So in total, state and federal grants, if you look at the combined portion of that pie is 73.3% in 2019 as opposed to 71.3%. And that's just due to that local share reduction. And then operating expenses by departments. This excludes depreciation and loss on disposal of assets. There weren't many significant changes there. Fixed route and dialer ride, transit operations did increase about 2%. And then faculty maintenance increased just under 1% there. And then general administration decreased about 2% from prior years. So any questions?
Questions? It's good? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move on to item number 10, transit feasibility study. Results and findings.
All right, commissioners. As you know, we had a consultant, SRF, come in and do a comprehensive feasibility study for all of our transit operations facilities. And they broke it down into four technical memorandums as opposed to one plan. So I'll go over each one of the technical memorandums and then show you the conceptual designs they made for us. So past studies and feedback from Metro Bus staff has identified the need to investigate how we can accommodate transit operations through improved utilization, expansion of our existing facilities and/or expansion of facilities. Our current operations facility is operating at its capacity, and it is landlocked, both in its, by properties around us and in our footprint. We cannot expand this within development codes currently. Our mobility training center has capacity available. However, it lacks convenient and affordable parking for staff. We've been able to do what we need to within our existing footprint. However, it has led to some separation of departments through both distance and through physical barriers, having some downtown and some here. Status quo can be maintained as long as there's no expansion in service, staff, vehicles, or information technology services. However, to meet the goals outlined in our long-range transit plan, we would have to use an expansion in all of those areas. The consultant also did a SWOT analysis for all of our existing facilities. If you're not aware, that's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. So looked at each one of our facilities, and that's outlined in the technical memorandum. So next, in technical memorandum two, they looked at evaluating each one of our facilities as they exist. And they came to the conclusion that all three of the facilities could be enhanced to better embody Metro Bus organization goals than to expand transit services to support the community as it grows. There are some opportunities in assessing and reconfiguring within our current footprint. And an architectural update to all of our facilities would help support the transit system's brand and identity. Then they went into something they called programming and pre-design. So this was, after looking at all of our facilities and the space we need, they kind of came up with this great diagram for us. And each circle represents a different function, and it kind of gives you an idea of the space we need. This is planned out through 2070. Our largest area here is this bus parking. So I mean, if you look at our facility as it exists, the largest space we're using is for bus parking. But they also looked at things like bus maintenance. Staff amenities is gray. Office functions is the smaller blue circles. Yellow is the training area. And this is for meeting and publics for like our boardrooms and things like that. But this diagram does a great job of kind of showing what we need as far as space for each function. And the conclusion that they came to was the size requirements for any facility we would need by 2070. And they estimated that we would need approximately 12 acres to accommodate Metro Bus operations. And we would need another two acres if we were to do a Western Transit Center. All right. Memorandum four, they actually went into doing some conceptual designs. Now, these are just conceptual designs. They're based, they're to let us as an organization kind of wrap ourselves around what it would cost and what it could look like if we were to do any expansion to this facility. Look at a new, they looked at a new operations facility as well as the transit, Western Transit Hub. They looked at our current budgeting. In three to five years, we have money budgeted for land acquisition and development of a Western Transit Hub. Six to seven years, we have funds budgeted for improvements to our current operations facility, this facility here. And eight to 10 year out, we could look at larger projects. However, that would be based on the availability of state and federal funding sources. So they did some conceptual designs for us. This kind, this graphic right here looks at, if you kind of just imagine the footprint we would need on our current area in order to accommodate what we would be needing 2070. They kind of do a conceptual campus for us and did some designs of what Metro Bus operations could look like if we were to acquire the property needed around us to do it. This was our preferred model here because it's, you'll find out, the next slide is considerably cheaper. But the estimated cost was about $34.55 million to, in 2024, to accomplish this full buildup. The next thing they looked at is putting this facility onto a new site. The cost on that was $57 million, and that's in 2024. They did some conceptual designs for that as well. However, we wanted to point out that this is a difference in $22.45 million between staying on this site and doing property acquisitions and updates and acquiring a new site. Finally, they looked at the Western Transit Hub, which is outlined in our long-range transit plan, the need for a Western Transit Hub. And that's why they chose this project to do a conceptual design on. They did a conceptual architectural design, site design, and just did some drawings. It would be estimated to cost right around $7 million. However, our downtown transit center is at full capacity. And so this would alleviate the pressure on the downtown transit center. So we wouldn't need to do any expansion to that facility because the pressure would be relieved onto the west end. This west end could accommodate up to about 50% of the routes that are currently hovering out of downtown. Could be shifted to the west end, and that would allow them to be both running at around 50% capacity as opposed to the one running at 100%. Any questions? Once again, I just wanted to point out, this was all conceptual. It was just, it was to allow us to plan for over the next 50 years what our facility needs are.
When they said they were looking at new property, where were they looking at for that? What are they buying? Let's put it that way.
Well, that particular cost estimate looks at one of the properties out in the Saint Cloud Airport Park Industrial, in Saint Cloud Airport Industrial Park. We looked at several properties, I think, fit all of them across the metro area. That was just the one where they're like, their scoring rubric that came out to be the most feasible and least expensive.
Isn't that a long ways out?
It is.
Distance-wise, I mean?
It is. And that tends to be a trend that we've found, that people are kind of, it's because it's cheaper to build a greenfield outside of town than it is to...
Because my other thought was, if, when North Star goes to engine Sartell down at that, that old site you got down there. I don't know, who's selling that property? City of Sartell or is that privately owned?
Privately owned.
I don't know what they get for that, but that should go pretty cheap.
And yeah, this is just conceptual. I mean, it's, it looked at several sites. And by doing that, it kind of provided Metro Bus staff with the procedure for looking at multiple sites. So a lot of what they did is just kind of established procedures and processes by which, when we get ready to do these projects, we can accurately assess and find the right fit for us and at the right cost.
Yeah. I'm just curious.
They initially looked at 14 different sites for the operations facility, and we narrowed it down to either existing and one other. And that one, they had an entire checklist on what fit the most and what was the most feasible, and pros and cons. And distance away was a con, obviously, but they did look at all around. I mean, all around. They looked all over, and that was by far the cheapest viable solution.
Because to me, if North Star ends someplace, it would be nice that, that would be the bus headquarters too. I mean, to me, it kind of, they fit. No matter where that is, I think it would fit nice. If we're going to move anyway and spend $50 million.
Was this consultant really driven on public transportation or just more building specs?
Public transportation and both were factored in to this. And so they looked heavily at our system as it exists and as the long-range plan outlines it in the future.
I just think if we were to repeat history, I mean, if I think back the last five years, the disruptors in public transportation. Just flew back from New York City this morning, and there's more Ubers out there than ever right now. And I just think the next 50 years is going to look a lot different in a public transit in central Minnesota than simply duplicating our garage space and...
So this does make assumptions on growth patterns remaining as they have been. So really, we have to look at the trends and then carry them out. That's how we can plan. Things will change. North Star would be a factor. And that's why it was really nice that they created these processes by which we can assess things. So as things change and as we get closer to the project dates, we can put the information that we have into them, and the output will be even more accurate pictured than what they were able to get us today.
And you're on that Western site. Where did you look at that?
That was off of Second Street in Wake Park, over kind of by the Wacosa Building. That has, again, they went through all the pros and the cons, and it had to do with traffic volumes and available space, cost of the space. So it was just a conceptual site that, of the ones we looked at, that one rose to the top, and so they chose to do the conceptual design on that site.
Well, I think, you know, looking at that aspect, I think that probably financially is more viable. And if that relieves, you know, increases capacity there, right? For the other one being 2024, that dollar amount, I, in my opinion, that's way too much at this point in seeing, you know, looking at trends. I think where we're at, but the Western, really, if you're at 100% capacity now, I mean, even at the same, even at no change in increase, that probably makes sense to look forward. And that's not too far away, 2024 is...
No, 2070 might, it might not be here.
Oh, you'll be around 2070.
Brian will have a statue of me sitting there.
Lord help me.
Only for 15 minutes, though. My opinion on that, I mean, that should be something we look at. I mean, if it's at 100%, and that's one of the frequent issues I have is in the downtown area, about just how challenging that is for a lot of businesses and such. But if we can, if we can make that 50%, make it 50%, and have that Western piece in that Wake Park section, I think that might be...
Is that the house in the old, in the old two houses that are on corner?
Is that his house?
The old two rental...
I wish your...
The one he's about to buy.
That price would go a million bucks.
Yeah. The two rental houses on Second and Sun Drove.
They're both, well, they're both for sale.
Well, that might be if we're looking at short time frame, maybe looking at that aspect. It's certainly easier to go through sales in this domain, cost-wise. All right, any other questions, comments? Thanks. Okay. We'll move on then to consideration of connect service number 11.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am here today to give you an update on the Connects pilot service currently serving the Sartell area. So in addition to what was in your agenda pack, and I just have some slides here to kind of show you some of the information that was used to come up with the recommendations to the board. And so I've included a slide that speaks to the current Connect service area. Now, it should be noted that it's not showing the Sartell High School, which is maybe further up on the map. But this shows the current service area as well as the previous Route 32, just for kind of a visual of the two services. In addition to that, so given the recommendations and the previous model, I wanted to also show that we did with those changes, we made some changes to the Route 31. So I brought the visual of the previous and the expanded Route 31 that has some, where that comes into play later is depending on the decision and the recommendations made, would have some, there would be some changes that would have to be made back to the 31 depending on, you know, the outcome of this board. So I just wanted to show that. What this slide shows is, so we've got three things on this slide. So this shows actual Connects 2019 ridership. That's the black line that you see here. What we needed to do in order to give a proper estimate of what the Route 32 would look like, so our average decline in ridership across the system last year was, or excuse me, for fiscal year 2019 was 7%. And so what we had to do is we had to take the 32 numbers from the previous year, and we had to apply that decrease to it. So that's what you'll...
So that's what you'll see with the red line. What you see with the green line is we took, because of that change with the Route 31 and the Route 32, it changed the ride on the Route 31 from a two-seat ride to a one-seat ride. So what we had to do is we had to make some adjustments for those transfers. So we took the difference in transfers from 2018 and 2019, and we cut that in half, and we said that we assume that 50% of those transfers should be applied to this number. And so what that shows is that when we make that adjustment and we factor in those items that, as I noted in the memo, in the last four months, that the Connects ridership has exceeded the previous Route 32 as well as the, when we added those adjustments. The next slide that I've got here, so this just shows a visual of what the first half of the trial was, what the schedule was, what the second half of the trial was when we extended the pilot project out through the end of the year. Ridership by hour, so what this does is this takes down, this takes all of our hours of service out on the street, and it breaks it down, shows what we're averaging as far as riders per hour. And so that was some of the information that was used for the team to come up with the, the recommendations to the board. And so we take that and we look at, there's a couple here where, so like, up there, we start later in the day, so it's only a half hour versus an hour, so we noted that just on the slide. So our three recommendations to the board today, we're recommending that the Connect Service become a permanent service of Metro Bus effective January 1st, 2020. We're recommending that weekday service end at 5:00 PM. Saturday service would remain the same with that break in between. What those breaks allow us to do is, is that allows us to have our operators out there. So right now, what we have to do is we bring in an operator, they do their pre-trip, they do their thing, they drive out there, they provide the operator a break, then they deadhead back to the garage, change out buses, and go into a different service. Based on the ridership, what we saw ridership per hour, we made these recommendations based on low ridership during that time, so that kind of accomplishes two things, accomplishes the operator take a break without a second operator going out, but those were the, the times when there was a lower ridership. Sundays would change to 10 to 4:00 PM, again with a, with a break from 11 to 11:00. So this is just, this shows, so this is kind of a, an update of that previous slide, but what I'm showing is that in the gray are the times that we're recommending for the changes, and so what that shows you is that those were the areas of lower ridership that we, that those were, that was why we made the recommendations, to make it more cost-effective. Recommended schedule, again, similar to what I showed earlier, just the visual. And the third piece of the recommendation is that we, what we, what we have on our, our maps of the previous 32 is we've got a pocket of what we believe is going to be good ridership or additional ridership. And so we're recommending that we expand the, the service area to serve some of these other businesses that showed, when we did our ridership surveys, boarding and light and a lighting data, it showed that there were significant amounts of ridership in those areas. So we're thinking that by reaching out to those additional areas, we will get additional ridership. In addition to that, we've also, we've got, I forget the name of the trailer, the trailer park that's.
Green Village.
Is it the Green Village that we're serving during?
Or Highview.
Well, this is, so Highview with the Connect Service, we got a significant, significant amount of ridership there, and so what we're, what we're thinking based on the feedback that we got from the community, based on the public, that by serving that area, we would get some additional ridership out there. So what this shows is this is the proposed new Connect Service area, the Sartell High School up here. We've got Altran down here, we've got the kind of that trailer park in the other side of Country Manor in here. This line that you see here would be kind of that extended piece where we would look to, to gain additional ridership in that area. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
So we've had quite a few conversations, I guess, leading up to this, and from a Sartell perspective, we're very much in favor of continuing the service. I think it fits well for our community. But some of the concerns I have would be, as we talk about the overall, overall ridership for Metro Bus decreasing by 7%, and we're saying, we're starting to see an increase in ridership in this service, yet we're now going to start cutting the hours, and I'm not, I also wouldn't refer to the hours of transition or a break for a driver, totally makes sense for me. But when I think about, you know, potentially not starting until 10:00 AM or shutting off right at 5:00, I think about workers that are going to work until 5:00 or 5:30. They can no longer utilize the service to get to work because they can't get home from work from the service. And so I just, how was that deliberated, or can you give us insight into that decision?
Sure, sure. So those were, those were definitely some of the questions that got brought up as part of the project team. And what we looked at for that was, let me just jump back to that slide here real quick. What you'll see is during those times, ridership just wasn't there. So if you look at the weekdays between 8:00 and 8:10, we had 1.4 riders, we had 0.93 riders, and then later in the day, excuse me, that's on Sundays, I'm sorry. Then you look at later in the day, you know, we had a significant jump after that, that 5:00 PM mark.
And is that something we normally would go through on even a fixed route, as we would look at times and make adjustments to fixed route scheduling as well?
Kind of the same process we'd look at.
Yeah, so if we see, if we were to put up any fixed route on that same analysis, we would make the similar decision?
We'd analyze it the same way, absolutely. Yeah, so we're looking at, you know, when this service started, when we started this whole process of analyzing it, we were at 5.37 or riders per hour, so we kind of, we tried to use that as the benchmark. We want, we obviously want to go up. But we, but we also recognize that this service, it's, it's a more personal, we call it a more premium service. And so it's, you're not standing out there at the bus stop waiting for the bus. So it's, yeah, so we, so we looked at this, we, did I add that?
I was going to say, I, I'm just going to add on to what Dave was saying, is that it didn't perform in the way that we assumed it was going to perform. In that, if I was using the service, I would use it for happy hour, right? Or I would use it for that work timeframe coming home. But as you can see, that's not the riders using it. The people that are using it are midday riders, so not the people that you would necessarily assume, right? And so in doing the analysis the way that we did, we took a look at that and said, okay, we have to put our assumptions aside because the data is showing not what we were assuming was going to happen.
Totally agree. And I think based off of how we have set up the program, it probably aligns to certain demographics, right? We don't have an electronic means to schedule, right? I can't go on an app. If I'm sitting at happy hour, that's all I'm ordering in my Uber, right? I'm not stepping away from the table to make a phone call to Metro Bus to say, hey, how soon can you pick me up? And, and so I think there's, there's pros and cons to it. It's a cheaper entrance into the marketplace with a premium service. And I just, one of the things that, when we started it, a pro that I really saw for the overall system is that it was, it was planned to be cheaper than having 32 just continue to make the loop, right? Did, did we see that performance play out as the service overall cost was lower than having a full-sized bus or no?
No, no, listen, I, I think that was included in your packet as well, so that the additional cost, just for what we're recommending, is an additional $42,000 in fiscal year 20. So that's, that's in addition to the cost of what, what the fixed route at the, at the previous hours that were in play prior to implementing the Connects.
That's an additional cost from, from the pilot? What's the total cost?
So the additional, the additional cost would be, so it was 434,000, how many exact numbers? So then when you add the 42,000 onto that, it would be additional.
So it's an addition to that?
Correct. 42,000 is an addition to 434,000 dollars. So we take the cost of what the fixed route was, and then we have to add the additional cost of the Connects on top of that, which is the 42,000 total with the local share that was in there.
Mr. Chair? Whether this is, I mean, I know what we're trying to do is we're trying to serve underserviced or lower ridership areas. I don't care if it's in Sartell, Sauk Rapids, Wake Park, St. Cloud. My opinion is it's a very expensive dial ride. It's not dial ride, it's not for dial ride, people that qualify for dial ride. This is an expensive taxi service, is the way I look at it. It's on top of what's already there, that half million dollars for this. And I don't care if it's in Sauk Rapids or St. Cloud. The ridership, to me, there's other options out there. So I'm, I'm not going to support this, whether, no matter where it is. I mean, this is, the ridership's just not there for what that's going to cost us.
Any other comments? I tend to agree, it seems high from, I mean, that's not the anticipated results that you were looking at, getting in the pilot. You know, with the, the percentage that you said went down 7%, did, was there a breakdown of that analysis? Is it, did it go down in different areas of, of the overall, or is that just in one specific? I mean, obviously, student population declined at the university, I could, my common sense to me would tell me that that's might be where some of that was. How did that reflect community-wide, that 7%? How does, was that factored in in that analysis?
So the 7%, so we take out, we just take our base fixed route system, and so that 7% was our average decline for that base system for fiscal year.
The entire system.
Right, just the base system. So we take out St. Bud's Gate, we take out our dial ride, it's just the fixed route base system. And so when we applied that to the previous ridership from the 32, because that's, that would only be fair, right? We can't just assume, we can't compare the Connects ridership to the prior fixed route 32 ridership because we had, we saw a decline in ridership. So we applied that average amount to what that 32 ridership was the previous year, assuming that it wouldn't be 10 or it wouldn't be 5. We just used that average amount, and we applied that to that ridership. And so that was, that was as fair of a comparison of two different services as we could give given that that was our average decline. So that wouldn't include any of the, the student ridership that year. I mean, I guess it could when they're riding the base system. Right, right, but not on campus. And we, we felt that was the fairest comparison. So we, we did see, you know, as you can see, the ridership, and that's why we're recommending the changes in the service hours, because we did see, you know, some increases in ridership during that time.
Do we have an overall plan or threshold in when we evaluate routes? I know, I mean, this one came about because it was the lowest in the network, right? And I think it was a great call to say, hey, this is the lowest, it's not working what we have today. How do we look at something new? But as I go through our other routes, I mean, I see areas where they're lower than what the original 32 was at, right? In a given month. And I wonder, is there, do we have a baseline to say, hey, this is when we should start evaluating the route and make changes, or is it kind of ad hoc?
We started here because this was our lowest performing, and now our plan is to start working our way up. So we went into it with the idea that we wanted to see an increase in ridership above and beyond what we're seeing, about 5.37 or 5.73, I might be flipping my numbers wrong. But that was, that was our intention going into it.
If, if that's the intention in looking at those other areas, be help, more helpful for me if I knew what those costs are going forward, because once you start in this direction and putting something in permanent, there should be an expectation that some of those routes that you would do that. So what's that overall cost and is that factored in? I mean, I would assume if you want to do that here and you're making it permanent, that there'd be another route somewhere in the system that would be there, and what would that long-term cost be? Especially as it relates to the fact that we were looking at some long-term capital costs in, in buildings, how, how, you know, I'm just, I'm much more financially cautious of, of long-term decisions rather than, you know, because this to me, once you, once you, once you go into something, you do a pilot, you do something permanent, there's going to be a, a high demand somewhere else for that type of service. And how do you say no? And then, or, and if you don't say no, what's that financially going to be for our system? You know, if we, if we do that.
Mr. Chair? That was, that was my concern too, is as the board looks at other low ridership routes, this is very expensive. I mean, there's other alternatives, these are not people riding dial ride, these are people that can call Uber or call a taxi. And I'm not saying, I mean, let's say Sauk Rapids route, what, 22, 21 is the lowest one, and you do this there. I wouldn't vote for that either. With that kind of ridership, you can't, you can't, you can't do it. It's very expensive, it's a very expensive model if we go this way with not just this route, but others as we get to the Westwood area, wherever there are. That's my concern. Is as we look at the low ridership, we're going to do this all over the system then?
Is it fair to ask the question that for $40,000, what's it cost? How many more customers are you going to get for $40,000, and what's a cost per customer at that point?
Per capita?
Yeah.
Versus calling an Uber?
Okay, you're an Uber.
Wonder, are we, are we factored in the cost of maintaining the, the bus pickups, right, that we aren't doing with this service? Right, so when it snows out and the plows plow everything in? I mean, I see around the Medical Arts area, we've got a guy that goes out and cleans all that up on, I think it's Route 31. We're not doing that now on 32. What's that?
We have, we have one shelter on the 32 that we maintain, the other were just stops, 12, I think 13 stops that we maintain along.
Okay, and if the stop was plowed in?
The, the stops are the responsibility of the people in front, their, their place or the residence or the business. We maintain the shelter.
Okay.
I think the other thing that we have to remember is that I agree with you, it's an expensive service. And the other thing that we're looking at though is no matter what recommendations, and I don't want to say no matter what, but if we come forward and say we think we're going to increase ridership in the Westwood area because right now the routes only come once every hour, hour and a half, and we want to increase that to every half an hour, we think that's going to help. Well, that's, there's going to be a cost associated with that as well, right? So no matter what solutions we bring forward, I, I'm pretty confident in being, being able to tell you that there's going to be a cost associated. Now, is that going to work, and are we going to come back and adjust and reevaluate? Absolutely. Because like Dave said, we've got Dave on board, and we've got Doug on board now, and we've got the internal team, Debbie and her team are out there getting the feedback from the community and we're bringing that forward. So there, there's all kinds of players involved, but I can tell you that, and which I agree, this is a premium service. But I, I don't want to bring false hope and to say we're going to improve every route in the next five years without a, a cost associated to that. It's just going to, if, if we want to improve our whole system and say, okay, right now we're operating every, on the hour, and we want to increase that to every half an hour, there's a cost associated. If we want to say, yep, the Westwood area hits these areas, and we want to increase the service area because we know that these are applicable businesses, there's going to be a cost associated with those recommendations. And so I don't want to say, okay, it's this and at this cost, or else it's these options, because what we bring forward, there's going to be other solutions, and it doesn't have to be this, but we have to look at our system and figure out what we can do to increase that ridership. And, and those are going to be, what, I mean, we're, we're throwing dirt at the wall, right? We're trying to come up with, with solutions that other systems are doing, we're coming up with recommendations from other systems around the country, we're talking with MINDOT on a regular basis, we're in the Transit Advisory Committee, I mean, we're, we're trying to hit it from all areas and come. I mean, we're, we're trying to hit it from all areas and come up with viable solutions.
If this is a premium service, are they charged a premium price?
We can discuss that, absolutely.
Some systems do.
I mean, seriously, if, if it is door-to-door service, basically, or whatever type you want to call it, maybe that's, that's better than me get, walk, a block to get to a bus and wait, and have to make the whole round, get off, and it cost me a dollar, it shouldn't cost him a dollar, it should cost him more.
It's, it's an option, right? But then, do we apply that towards the operations, or do we apply that towards an app? Right? Because that's the other thing that we keep hearing.
Yeah.
You know, wait times calling in, and wait times, wait times waiting for the bus, and wait times those types of things. Well, how much of that would alleviate, alleviate it with an app? I don't have, we don't have an answer for that.
Well, in some of what you're saying, you know, and I, I don't disagree, obviously, if you're going to increase frequency, it's going to be a cost to those things. But how do you compare those costs? I mean, I might want to see that done in an area that's already a non-premium service from an aspect of equity in the system. And if you could, if you could give me a comparison to that, then it's easier to make a decision as to which direction to go. I, you know, if you're looking at the same dollar amount for a route, I'd probably go the, the regular rather than the premium route. But I, you know, I don't, I don't have that information right now, and that's, that's the challenge. I'm, you know, I, are all of our goals is to increase ridership, you know, on this piece, but what's the, same thing, you're struggling, what's the best way to do that? But for equity purposes, and I'd be interested more in that it's a premium service, it's different, where else would you want to have another premium service? And how do you, I'm just looking long-term on that piece, but...
Instead of, instead of making this permanently in January first, how about doing a, I hate to say it, but doing another six-month study on it, and with the change dollars?
With your changes, yes.
And see what happens to those, if those numbers go up or down?
And at the same time, give us some of that analysis of what other fixed routes could, you know, I'd like to compare, you know, are, are there other parts of the system where you don't have ridership now?
Because if we change hours, do we lose a whole bunch of people?
Well, again, if you take a look at that, the overall average.
Well, you don't know that.
Yeah, and sort of we're banking on it.
I mean, you're counting hours that are used today. And if it's hours change, they may, those hours may change up. That rider, ridership may change up there, too. They, I don't know for will.
I'd be in favor.
That's the wishes.
I'd be in favor of making, extending it for six months to get the numbers up. But I don't think I want to make a move.
Not at this time. And then I'd actually look at, maybe, if it, like you say, if it's a premium service, maybe it's a, a little bit more money, too. I don't know if you justify, I don't know if you can compensate the whole forty thousand dollars, but maybe you can. I don't know what the numbers are.
How many total riders in a year do you project? Fiscal year twenty-twenty, what do you project for total ridership?
Well, I wish we still had those numbers. We've got the numbers, we took the numbers off the, off the graph, but, uh...
The way you're doing, this service is currently right now. So extending a month or two while some of those questions and numbers, that kind of jeopardize or cause a significant cost?
It won't, but I don't know that we're going to be able to bring forward any additional information. You know, like, three months worth of ridership, we can change the hours, but we're going to, you know, obviously have to advertise that, make that public information, and so there's going to take a learning curve, time period for that. So to say we're going to extend it by three months, or, I just don't know that we're going to be able to...
You don't make a change.
It'd have to be six months at least. I'd agree, three is way too short.
Right, and by the time we implement, if we do a rate change, well, we have to do a public hearing for that, and, you know, there's a process involved in that. We wouldn't see that take effect until April at the very least.
So, so what is the total ridership? Per year on that?
Best guess?
We're up around two, a little over two thousand.
Per year?
Or no, per month. We're probably not.
Twenty-four dollars?
Figure twenty, twenty-two thousand.
Twenty thousand people. Charge them an extra two bucks, that'd be the forty dollars.
And then the conversation goes to, does that go to operational cost of it, or does that go to enhancement of services? But at minimum, you, you have the option of covering your costs.
Covering the costs.
And to me, two dollars more.
But you're still going down then?
Because what is the cost now for that service?
How many people want to pay it though?
A dollar twenty-five, it's the same as our fixed route.
So I don't think two twenty-five or two fifty for a door-to-door service is too bad.
So the thing with that, keep in mind, we charge that for dial rides, right? So...
But you got to qualify for, I, I could get this service, Ryan can get this service. He can't get dial ride.
That's true. That's, that's true.
But you could call a cab or Uber, too.
Again, but not for two, not for three bucks.
No, but why are we providing that?
Well, it's an attempt to increase our ridership, right?
It is.
At what cost?
But the numbers I saw, I mean, that doesn't justify.
Well, and this cost is very even. If you, if you charge an extra two bucks, it would come pretty even.
Well, keep in, if you charge the extra two bucks, ridership is going to decrease to give, right? People aren't going to pay it then. It, it, that's just a fact, right? And so, and we'll, we'll earn more, but we'll have less ridership.
Except you've already proved that there's a different ridership in that area.
Yeah.
So maybe they would hit.
Maybe. I'm not, I don't know. I don't have any...
That's a...
Yep.
You can make the assumption either way.
Absolutely.
And the other argument to that would be, if, why wouldn't they use it? Why are they using it now then? Because it's too cheap. I don't know. These are just all questions.
Yeah, a lot of questions.
There's not real answers to them.
And I'd rather, sorry, I'd rather see us increase the cost on it, and if it, and if it continues to fail at that point, and the sentiment is, hey, let's not try and provide an Uber? I'm certainly in favor of that. I've always been in favor of let the, the public beat out, or the private beat out the public. But I would say there's also many other areas that we also need to look internally and go, what are we subsidizing this service for if, overall, the public could get an Uber service for cheaper than the overall benefit of a route? And I think that's a, a real question that we need to start asking ourselves, including on connect service.
Well, that's kind of what you, you started with, the, the changing of technology and how things are happening.
Because you're right, you're not going to dial.
You're right, you don't know what that, that may be. I think we all might be not owning vehicles. The future will say that, and, you know, and we'll all be on some type of Uber.
Well, and I think to Paula's point that she made, we're going to continue to bring these recommendations forward. We just, we just don't want to sit back and say, oh, that ridership, that low-ridership is okay anymore. We want to continue to, to look at innovative ways to bring that ridership up. And so that could mean Westwood, that could mean Sauk Rapids, that could mean Way Park, St. Cloud. You know, all these different ideas that we could be doing a pilot project somewhere else in the next year.
And that could be, this could be the pilot project to raise it two dollars to get it to where it should be. If the future says that Route two in Way Park should have that, then you know what the price is. It's not a buck and a quarter, it's two fifty. You know, will it, will it hold that? I mean, then, then you would have that price given.
I'm, I'm always been concerned over the years in the fact that, that our fare box doesn't reach the percentages that we have set as goals. And then this further exacerbates that, that piece of it, so, um, yeah.
How long is the process to increase the fares?
Sixty, ninety days?
I'd say ninety days total, is the time to get everything done.
Public hearings.
Is sixty days, is, is six months fare after we increase the fare to?
Six months after, or six months from January first?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Is three months a long enough period of time to determine if the rates effect would hurt anything, or would six months be a better?
And so, so then that would be, lead to a larger question, right? So we change the fare, well then, do we change the fare and also the hours at the same time? Because then you're changing two variables, right? Or do you leave one and change the other for six months, and then change the other for six? Like, what, where? It's very difficult when they're doing the analysis if you continue to change the variables. So if we're going to change two variables at one time, how do you know what's the pro and what's not?
Well, you've got analysis for the ridership.
But if you change the fare...
But you don't have a fare.
But increasing fare won't increase...
But if you increase the fare, and also you cut the hours, what was the, what was the cause and what was the effect? Which was the issue, right? Was it because you changed the hours, or was it because you changed the fare?
But is it fair to say that in the hours, what I'd call blackout hours, that aren't getting ridership today, increasing fare isn't going to increase ridership in those hours, right?
I would agree with that, but if it's going to decrease, if we look at this pilot program, and we increase fares by two fifty, and also we cut the hours by the, the recommended changes that we're making, and we see ridership either maintain exactly where it's at right now and not increase, or we see ridership decrease, which anytime you make a fare change, you're going to see a dip in ridership. And anytime you make a, any type of change to a service, immediately following the service, history has shown us that you see a dip. So will that dip then go back? Do you see what I'm saying? The more variables you change during the pilot...
That's not a traditional service, this is a unique service.
It is, but how do we know? Do you, all I'm saying is, we have to, I would caution to say, which variable do you want to change? Do you want to change them both at the same time? Do you want to do a pilot for an additional six months with the change in hours, and then a pilot with the change in cost? Or do you want, do you want to change it all back up and, throw it all back up and there again?
Is it less confusing to do them both at one time?
It is, but you can't then tell.
I know you can't, but it would still give us, it would still give us...
It's going to give us the ridership.
Ridership. Whether it's good, bad, or indifferent.
It's going to give us the ridership. Because if it keeps going down...
And you're right, we don't know which one affected it. Maybe both of them did.
We won't know that.
But that, to me, would be the pilot program for the next route that we're going to do.
But is there a system, today, and even in a potential pilot, they'd have to call in for a ride?
Correct.
Right, is there a way of tracking that? So if someone calls in in the future, oh, during our blackout hours, we're able to say, wow, we're seeing an increase in requests, because we're taking those manually, we're seeing an increase in requests during these times where we're not providing service?
And you could do your six-month, too, because it takes you ninety days to, it's taken you three months already just to get up to the fare increase, so you, you, you know, I'm trying to not stop something and then have you start another pilot, so that there's some continuity. So you, if you do it six months, you do the first three months, because it's going to take you that to do a fare increase. So you're, you'll see something, you'll see three, you'll basically do the two options by just doing that, because you're going to have three months without a fare increase, just based on our procedure. And you can see the two, you get the both of, you know, I mean, not the most scientific aspect of doing it, but you can, you can see all, at three months, all of a sudden, if that drops, then you'll know its price. And I, and I didn't know that. I mean, we used to have a trolley downtown, and it was free, and then it went to fifty cents, and ridership...
For fifty cents, yeah.
On fifty cents, so, I mean, people like the fact that they pay nothing.
So you're saying, change the service hours for the three months, we'll have ridership data for this decrease in service hours. Then we do the fare increase, and then we'll have an additional three months.
Right, basically go back to the extension of six months, and then you, you can't do anything other than that, because it takes you ninety days to do a fare increase. So there you go, three and three. And then we evaluate at the end of that six months, and, and then I would like, you know, some, maybe some numbers of where else you're looking at, you know, the other types of options that you have. I don't want to create, you know, you, you obviously put this together with the reduced hours to reduce that dollar amount. So if you don't do the reduced hour, you're going to increase the dollar amount, and then you might have to go a higher fare. So I, this just to me makes more logical sense going forward. And, you know, and I, by no means is this any criticism, and you're willing, in trying to bring things that create ridership. This is just more the struggle, in my mind, from that financial piece. And maybe you shouldn't have started with the fifty-seven million dollar future cost, because I'm just looking from financially, future cost to this system, and, you know, we're, you know, we're still in debt, and this is all new, the debts, you know, to the Metro since I've been on board, and so I'm caught price-conscious a little bit. So...
I would make a motion to give a six-month extension, increasing the rates and starting the hours immediately.
Start the process for a rate increase, because we can't do that without a process. Separate motion, so, but start the process for a rate increase.
And as of January first, start the reduced hours. Second?
Would that also incorporate the expanded service area?
Yes.
If that's where your forty-five thousand is.
Yeah, that's where you're, that's where...
Yeah, that's what you got, you got to take...
Gets you to forty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's fine. Everybody okay with that?
So I just want to make sure.
Motion anyway?
I want to make sure, three months, so January first, you're going to change the route and the hours?
Yes.
Keep the fares the same for the three months, and then three months into it in April is, we do the, or whenever.
Like, as a separate motion, we'll then start the fare increase process for the premium service.
Right.
So my question for you is, what, what dollar amount are you thinking? Two twenty-five, two fifty, three fifty? Like, what?
What does it take, you think, estimate to go?
Well, at least two bucks extra.
Two bucks extra.
Because there were forty thousand, little, give or take forty thousand dollars, we decked, and we give or take have twenty-some-odd thousand people riding the bus in the year, that's a forty thousand, that's, give or take, that's...
So we have to keep in mind that we can't increase more than double of the dial ride service. Because we're providing dial ride service in this area, we can't go more than two fifty.
Yeah, total, or the raise?
Two fifty one way. So total, total trip, two fifty.
That's not going to come.
Can we go two forty-nine?
So we can increase it a dollar twenty-five, we can't increase it any more than that.
Jeez. But this isn't a dial ride.
It's not.
It's a premium service.
Because we are providing that dial ride service in there, we can't...
But I can't get dial ride, and I live in that service. Well, I don't live in that service, but...
Yeah.
It's our state legislatures, I suppose.
I, I just think this is expensive. If we look at adding this in other areas, we got to really think about it as a board, as we try to roll this up under areas. So...
Well, we, we have a motion, but we don't have the clarification on the dollar amount. But that's, that's almost a separate, almost a separate motion.
We're just not making any headway if we just raise a buck and a quarter.
Because the two thousand, that's two thousand trips, not two thousand riders. So in other words, is my trip to the liquor store and back, one trip?
Or two?
Two.
You have to be two trips.
That's two trips.
Pay a fare going, and you pay a fare coming.
And up there, so that...
Twenty-three hundred is trips.
Is trips. So it's only really, from individual, it's only half of that.
Assuming, yeah, it depends, I mean, if there's...
So we're still losing twenty thousand dollars a year at that.
Unless the overall ridership increases.
Increases, right, because you expand the area.
So as long as it stays stagnant on ridership, there's still a deficit. I mean, through our six-month study, we'll likely still see a deficit of ten thousand dollars.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? And we have an idea to increase to the maximum that you can legally increase.
So just to clarify, the motion is to start the hours and the expanded service effective